Okay. Good evening, this is the March 26th meeting of the planning board. We'll take roll call. Mr. Abrams.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Simmons-Herling.
Here.
And Mrs. Stamperopoulos.
Present.
Present. Okay. We're gonna switch gears a little bit here and take up the home-based childcare regulations. So the first public hearing would be proposed zoning on its amendment relative to family home-based childcare regulations.
Are there any proponents to speak to this measure today?
Good evening, board members. Tom Skarowski, 281 Broadway, Chief of Planning Community Development for the city. Happy to talk about this project today. And this shouldn't be new news for many of the folks here tonight, as this went in front of the council last night, but also went in front of both the planning board and the city council in 2023, as we are looking to make some changes to streamline the process and to allow for more home-based providers and to allow for home-based providers to have more children within their home-based occupations. So we presented April 25th last year to this planning board, and our original presentation was unanimously supported by the planning board. And then it went to the city council zoning subcommittee. And then unfortunately, due to some scheduling issues, it just never made it back to the council agenda. And there's a statutory 90-day requirement through which when a public hearing is open and closed, an action must be taken. If an action isn't taken within that 90-day period, you essentially have to go through the process again. So that's why we are here tonight, once again, to talk about this home-based childcare ordinance. The one, two major changes since last time. This was proposed in April of last year. Number one, we had proposed removing the prohibition on pools in home-based daycare facilities, in part because we do have some local providers that already have pools within their homes. After further conversations with the city council, we decided to keep the existing prohibition for pools in the ordinance. But because of how long they've actually had the pools in place, the various providers, those will be in effect grandfathered in. So any new home-based childcare provider will not be allowed to have a pool per this new change, which actually is not dissimilar from what already exists on the books, except for those providers that already have a pool. And then secondly, originally, they had proposed lifting the limit for large home-based childcare from four to 10. And the spirit of that remains the same. The city council wants to support aligning with the state regulations, which is currently set at 10 at the limit, with the caveat that they wanted to include language that actually pegged the limit instead to a specific number, pegged the limit to whatever the EEC, the state-level regulatory agency, would use to set their limits. So in effect, this could be a dynamic changing limit that allows us to align with state regulations as or if they might shift. So again, today, the regulations are 10, but if the EEC decided tomorrow that they would like to move to 11, or conversely, if they'd like to move to nine children per home-based childcare, we would just basically ensure that we're aligned with state regulations, which, as I presented in April of last year, the state has a really rigorous program for permitting and reviewing and compliance to make sure that these home-based childcare providers are providing a safe and effective service for Revere families. I'll leave it at that, because I know I talked a lot last time and last night. But, you know, in summary, this supports small businesses, it implements a recommendation from our workforce development plan, and it provides additional supply for childcare in the state that has among the highest childcare costs in the nation. So I think it's a win for small businesses, it's a win for Revere families, and overall the city as a whole. Happy to take any questions that you might have, along with Danielle Osterman, here from my office, who's really been spearheading this effort.
Good evening. So basically, the question I asked earlier, what was the ages?
Yeah, so it's under seven years of age or under 16 if children have any special needs.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was just asking the ages. So the beginning ages?
Yep. Beginning age is as soon as the family needs childcare.
Would it be okay? I don't, I'm sure the city council will probably do it also, seeing that they had the inquiry about the in-ground swimming pools and how you had it in and then you took it out. There are different covers now that go over in-ground pools. In fact, they're called safety covers with high strength. Would it be okay to recommend that, or should we just leave that up to the city council?
So ultimately, it's always the planning board's responsibility in zoning amendment proposals to propose recommendations to the city council that they can then choose to act on, or they can continue to move forward with the amendment as they have currently proposed. We made the decision to remove that piece of our changes, because we didn't feel we had enough votes to get the whole thing across. But certainly, as somebody who proposed removing that pool prohibition last year, we do feel like it aligns with the state is very rigorous in how they monitor pools on home-based childcare facilities. So, you know, we felt like that was something that was reasonable to do, but we also understand that everyone wants our children to be safe. And there's a lot of uncertainty and fear about what might happen if we were to further allow proliferation of home-based daycare facilities with pools. So I appreciate that perspective. Just wanted to, like, lay out the scenarios for you there.
Thank you.
I just have another question on that. Regarding the pools, all right, is there a policy that eventually will be removed? Or is there anything that anybody put in file regarding that?
So the state has no prohibitions. We just do locally through our ordinance today. But the thing about zoning ordinances are, if you have, for lack of a better term, a statute of limitations exists, where if we have a prohibition on the books, but there are different projects that are in violation of that zoning ordinance for an extended period of time, in this case, over a decade, you are in effect grandfathered in due to our lack of enforcement on the matter. So that would allow those that have already been in existence to continue to have pools, but still prohibit any new arrangements from having pools, as long as we continue to monitor and enforce that component of our ordinance.
For the, and I'm looking through the document, I can't see, for any of these childcare facilities, right now, there is not a requirement for the property to be fenced in unless there's an outside play area, correct?
A pool as well. And Danielle, back me up here if there's anything else we're missing. But I don't believe there's any other requirements for fencing, except in which you're containing children, or, you know, preventing children, in the other case, from accessing a pool.
Yeah, and they're not required to have an outside play area, right? So for these home-based child cares, they're, the primary operation happens within the four walls of the facility, of the residence. They're not required to have an outdoor play area. I know I have one across the street from me, and I see them walk the kids to the park every day and back. They're not required to have an outside play area, right?
That's correct. They're not required to, they're required to have access to an outside play area. So that could be a park as well.
And I'm not hung up on the pools, but I just think if it's, if it's one where they're not required to have an outside play area, and they're not required to have fencing, I mean, they're just, these kids are as likely to walk into the street or into a neighbor's yard than to the property here. So I, I mean, I'm, I don't feel strongly, I want security, but it's, I just think we have to determine if pools is the major topic, fine, I can get supportive of saying that if they don't, if they have a pool, then we don't permit that property unless there's adequate safety requirements, which I, you know, we can enforce or not. I just think it's, if they're not required to have an outside play area, then the kids shouldn't be outside anyway, and kids, kids will escape. I hope not. But the reality is, as a pool owner, they're required to have a fence anyway, right? That is by city regulation.
And by state regulations, and is part of the inspection process. And, you know, I understand as, you know, father of three young children, somebody who's had my children in home-based daycare, I, both of the facilities I sent my children to did not have a pool. If I toured a facility that had a pool, it might give me pause, because we always worry about our children, rationally or irrationally. And, you know, I think ultimately, our original standpoint was that could be the choice of the parents, and ultimately, the responsibility of the provider, and the responsibility of the state in sort of enforcing the rules and regulations. But I also 100% understand where the council's coming from with this one, because we feel a great burden of responsibility when we're talking about the children within our city.
And a question that I believe I've heard in a prior correspondence, are there current operators that have pools at the moment, right? So we would basically be shutting down their operation?
There are three in operation today, but they've been in operation with pools for over a decade. And because of state statute that essentially says if you have a zoning ordinance in place that somebody is acting in opposition to the ordinance, but it is not in, that violation is not enforced for a period of time, in this case, over a decade.
Sure.
You actually are then allowed, in effect, grandfathered in, for lack of a better term, to continue to do that thing. So in this case, those providers that have had pools for over a decade without us enforcing that violation, they'll actually be allowed to continue to have pools. And that was our biggest concern throughout this whole situation, was we didn't want to put any providers out of business. So once-
Same.
Yeah. That was discussed, we figured that was a good compromise, they can continue to do what they want, but new providers would not be allowed to have pools.
Thank you. That's fair, thank you.
Excuse me. I'm just listening to your example and being in zoning a little while, that if I owned a building that was supposed to be sprinkled, and I never sprinkled it for 10 years, I would not be grandfathered in. Just because you don't get caught for 10 years for doing something, or no one gave you a violation, does not grandfather you in. I am in favor of the proposal, and I think there's some concerns here, but I do not believe, just because no one came out to the property and cited the violation, that that would grandfather you in.
That's a fire safety code. What Tom is talking about is zoning structures, non-conforming structures that exist in a pool would be, would be considered a non-conforming structure within the use of a daycare center. I was part of the, author of the first time around with this, and we definitely didn't want to, did not want to have pools with child daycare centers. We were more strict back then with our ordinances, and required fencing and no pools, but this is a different day and age, I imagine.
No, the new pool covers, and I agree with you, you were 100% right then, but now with the new pool covers, you could bring a racehorse and put it in the middle of this pool on a safety cover that has a high weight content, and it's gonna, it's gonna hold. These covers hold. So I feel, I feel that if they have a pool cover, and when we get to the vote, I'll put that recommendation in if it's okay.
Well, that's something certainly the planning board can recommend to the city council.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, so it's Massachusetts General Law 40A, Section 7, that states that if a property has been in violation for over 10 years, it then becomes a legally non-conforming structure. But that's, again, with regard to zoning, not some of the other matters you presented.
I'll argue this point at another time with you, and I'll pick apart your zoning, but I'm not going to do it now. Thank you, though. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, likewise.
If you're going from four to 10 kids, I think the cost is gonna cover it. Some pool covers would be like $500, and I think that's well worth it.
For safety?
For safety.
Thank you. I don't have the research in front of me to be able to call from, and it wasn't an exhibit for this motion. I think the safety covers are absolutely a measure to keep children safe, and who would ever wrong wanting to keep a child safe? I just, I don't have the research, right? And we didn't call it in for this, so I don't, I don't want to bring in things that aren't or haven't been reviewed and haven't had the time to go through all of the different review levels that would be required. That said, if nobody has any further questions for the childcare, I think that we would be ready for a vote, unless anybody further wants to speak. We've listened to the proponents, we haven't heard from the opponents. Are there any opponents on this measure? Tom and Danielle have gone to speak. Is there anybody else? Thank you. We're ready for a vote. We, we did. Are there any opponents that would like to speak on this? Guess not, so closed. Perfect.
The second public hearing before us is Overlook Ridge. And this is also something we've been working on with Overlook Ridge. There was a restriction in the zoning that stated that they had to construct a hotel on a certain parcel, I think it was Parcel A, before anything else could happen on the site. They won't, the reasoning for that was for the city to encourage commercial development on that site, not all residential. So you'll hear from the property management company that they- Oh, that's not working? Oh.
That's okay.
We've done this before.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, this always happens.
So again, the goal of the city was to not restrict development to just one commercial use, such as a hotel, but allow other commercial uses, such as retail, restaurant, office space. That was the reason behind it.
Okay. Thank you for having us. My name is Jennifer Schultz, and I am land use counsel on behalf of the applicant, Varis Residential. And with me this evening is Eric Ronell from Varis. So as was just explained to you, we were here before the planning board and the city council last year, and then more, much more recently, before the city council last evening. And so the differences between last year, the sort of proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, and this year, is we are now asking for less. So originally, with the proposed amendment, we were asking for the decoupling of the hotel from the remainder of the Overlook Ridge development, and then we're also asking for a reduction in required parking and a sort of new category of restaurant to be introduced into the code of a sort of fast casual, so not fast food, but not a sit-down restaurant. And so in response to a lot of feedback that we receive, what we've done this year is we've come back and are solely focused in on decoupling the hotel requirement from the remaining buildout of Overlook Ridge. And so just sort of directing you to either what's up on the screen or in front of you, just to provide the context, you know, Overlook Ridge, partially in Revere, as I'm sure everyone here knows, Overlook Ridge, partially in Malden. There are a few remaining sites in both municipalities, and what we're here to talk about tonight are the two remaining buildable lots that are on the Revere side of the Overlook Ridge master development. So at the sort of bottom of the screen or page is Lot 1, where there is slated to be a firehouse, and we have it labeled as retail, where there is approximately, give or take 10,000 square feet in addition to firehouse, roadways, parking, that is left for zoning compliant building structure. And then on Lot 15, on the top of your page, top of your screen, which has always been envisioned as multifamily housing with parking embedded into or sort of wrapped by the residential units, so that it is mostly hidden from view and not, you know, putting parking on display. So we did, last year, successfully go through the joint task force between both Malden and Revere to update the master plan, which is what you see on your screen. So this is what was approved in 2023 by the joint task force, that shows the manner in which Overlook Ridge Drive will be reoriented, really to create Lot 1 in order to lay out the firehouse and to lay out the two small retail buildings, and shows the concept of the new interchange exit and entrance ramps with Route 1, as that has been being negotiated and worked through and reviewed by Mass DOT, and more recently, by the State Environmental Review Authority, by MEPA. We did very recently receive our newest updated MEPA certificate, and that sort of went hand in hand with receipt of $4 million from Mass Works in a joint application by Revere and the applicant in last year's issuance of those awards. And that is slated entirely to help advance the, a new signalization with Salem Street and the new on and off ramps with Route 1. So not, not specifically relevant to the zoning ordinance that we're proposing tonight, but just sort of as an overall update on where we are on the overall planning and progress of finishing the buildout of this development. So I think really it's just to bring your attention, then, to the zoning amendment text itself. These are the two provisions, sort of as they would be amended if our proposal is accepted, but I think it's easier to look at it with showing the actual deletions that we are proposing in the amendment. So first up on the screen or in front of you, if you're on page four, is showing the decoupling of the concept of a hotel from retail. As the zoning amendment, I'm sorry, as the zoning is written right now, retail on its own cannot exist unless it is physically attached to a hotel. And so the approach and the proposal here is not to say hotels aren't allowed, you know, in this entire district, it's simply to say they are not a precursor requirement. You know, working very closely with the existing residents of Overlook Ridge on, in both municipalities, there is presently no onsite service, retail, no coffee shop, no, you know, play, no, I don't know, convenience store, no place to get your haircut, no, no anything. There are no services, no retail onsite. And we've received a lot of feedback that that is desired. And sort of similarly, that a hotel is not desired by the residents. And I will just sort of couple with that statement, that as a matter of sort of what the market will bear right now with financeability, viability, a hotel is not currently viable at this site. And so not only have we received feedback from residents that they don't want the transient nature of having a hotel right next to where they live, but that what they really want at that Lot 1 area is retail and local services. And then on the final slide, final page, is to show you in the ordinance as currently written, it has an overarching provision at the very end that states that nothing else can be built in Overlook Ridge unless you build a hotel. So again, it is simply to say that we are, we are proposing to decouple the concept of the requirement to come forward with a hotel, because without this deletion, you know, Varis, as the owner of these sites, is unable to proceed forward with any further development. So happy to answer any questions.
When the development was initially granted, part of the requirements was there'd be a hotel on the property, right? That was one of the initial commitments from the project.
That is correct.
And to decouple the hotel, you're saying now you'd want to build more residential units there for longer-term renters than the transient nature of a hotel, right?
Yes, that's right. Lot 15 has, has always been envisioned as residential. It was Lot 1 that was envisioned as having a hotel on it. And actually, with that physical layout and location, it would, without getting zoning variances and stepping far outside of your dimensional requirements or restrictions, it would be a relatively small hotel around the size, you know, 80 to 90 keys, at maximum is all that could be fit there. And so what we are asking for is retail being a much better fit for that site and the market in general, and not to have the requirement of a hotel.
And was 80 to 90 keys, was there a number committed to the city when you said you'd build a hotel?
No, there was not. It was simply that a hotel would be built, and, and of course, I think, you know, some will have in their memory that we're talking a couple decades ago, where that commitment was originally made. And I believe, although I'd have to double-check the data points, that five or six hotels have been developed and have become operational in Revere since that original commitment was made, which I think in part is why, you know, when we have talked to a hotel broker, you know, or brokers, they've said that cannot be supported in this location.
Yeah, I, so in the decades since this development started, or you gave that commitment to the city, other people have managed to come in and build hotels. And even as recent as last month, someone else came in with overwhelming, you know, acceptance from the city to build a hotel on Squire Road a few blocks from, from where you are. So, so I think it's unfortunate that that, you no longer see that vision. And as far as Lot 15 residential, that's always been the vision. What are we discussing about Lot 15 now, if that's always-
So the only thing that's relevant to Lot 15 is that overarching provision at the very end of the ordinance, that, so you can see here on what I have pulled up on the screen, that Lot 15 is identified as Sub District, OROD, you know, Overlook Ridge, Overlay District B. And when you go down to the language there, it specifically notes that that sub-district doesn't exist, shall not take effect until a hotel is constructed. And so the only relevance to our request as it pertains to Lot 15 is it can't be built right now.
It can't be built unless you give us the hotel you promised us, so you could build more apartments?
It, it can't, I mean-
Can't be built without a hotel?
Sure, yes. That is technically accurate, but, you know, over decades, the, I mean, the market has changed, and the client is not prepared to proceed forward with a hotel, and instead, they'd like to provide the retail that the residents that are now in the thousands have requested and desire.
Yep.
Just one additional note while we're talking about residential is to note that although it is not a requirement of your ordinance, that Varis has been meeting with the city and the residents, and is voluntarily offering to provide 15% of the units at affordable rates at or below 80% of the area median income.
In how units, excuse me, how many units?
So right now, it's laid out at approximately 310 units, so it would be 15% of those. And I'll also note in relation to that number, that what was originally envisioned in the state reviews was a higher number of units, and actually several- state reviews was a higher number of units and actually several floors, more density. But now that the over, the overriding Overlook Ridge master plan is coming to its final stage, the determination is that much density is not desired by the residents themselves, by really, you know, traffic studies, I think is what is driving that more than anything else, that 310 is the right number of units. The, it's a lower density, in fact, by several floors than what's allowed under your zoning code, but it is the right number without overloading the, the community that is being built there, that has been established and is continuing to be developed.
So it's 310 units. Now, how many residents do we have? Or basically, when, if this goes through and gets complete, how many residents do, we will have on that area?
So overall, in Overlook Ridge, assuming that Lot 15 is developed, and then there are, you can see on the map on the, the screen, over in Malden, Lots 13, 14A and 14B. So Veris' partner, Wind Development, is currently working with Malden to develop those three properties and are moving through a, a similar process that we are in. And all three of those will be residential. One of them will be entirely affordable, one of them will be senior housing, and one will be a mix. And so on the assumption that everything as envisioned right now is ultimately built out at those sizes, it will be approximately 4,000 residents total in all of Overlook Ridge. If your question instead was, how many human beings will be in the buildings on Lot 15, if I misunderstood, the answer to that is, it will be to be determined when we are back in front of you for site plan review. That right now, what we have is sort of the outline of what the floor print or the floor plate of the building would look like to be zoning compliant, including the parking for it. And then when we come, assuming we're able to receive a, the, the zoning amendment as proposed, we'll be back before you for site plan review shortly.
And you're pursuing a zoning amendment to reduce the number of required parking spaces as well?
No, we are, we are no longer requesting anything other than the decoupling of the hotel.
You also mentioned that it will be two small retail buildings?
Yes.
You mentioned that it will be like a salon or?
The intention is neighborhood services as, you know, as appropriate. And so we don't have tenants lined up right now, but really, you know, the size and the location will in part drive what ultimately goes there, whether it's, last night, I think we landed on the term bodega. It, you know, a, a small neighbor, neighborhood services store or stores, even within 5,000 square feet, you could have, you know, five small local businesses in there, each taking 1,000 square feet. It's, it's, that will not be a requirement, or, or I mean, it's not from, from our perspective, it's not a requirement or a request, would be sort of as, as can best serve the area, because if it's a mismatch for the area, then everybody loses.
I can add, one thing that is not permitted within those retail restaurant uses is fast food, drive-through restaurants.
Right.
If a restaurant is going there, it has to be a waiter restaurant with seats and you order from the counter and sit down and eat, but there would be no drive-through allowed.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. So I thought in your presentation, you said it wouldn't be a sit-down. And is it a sit-down, or is it maybe five or 10 seats? I'm confused.
Yeah. So, so the answer, unfortunately, again, is we don't know yet. It, it's something that we assume will be discussed at some length during the site plan review process, but may ultimately be something where through site plan review, it's classified as, you know, retail or restaurant in a zoning compliant manner. And then when a, you know, single tenant, multiple tenants do come forward and request, you know, and to negotiate into a lease, if it is allowed by zoning, then it'll just be going to the building commission to receive those fit-out permits. And if it is anything that is not allowed by zoning, we would be required to come and ask for relief for that. And so, I mean, of course, what was just stated of no drive-throughs is, is accurate under your zoning. We have no plans for a drive-through restaurant. We, we want this to be neighborhood service retail, and the rest is to be determined at this moment.
How many cities is your project in? I know you're in Revere, Malden. Are you in Saugus also?
No.
Just the two?
Just the two. Thank goodness.
I, I haven't been up there for a while, but I, I thought years, years ago, wasn't there stores up there at one time, maybe on the Malden side or kind of close to Route 1, on the backside? I thought there was some kind of retail.
No, the only thing that was.
The ice cream place.
Yeah, yeah. Cappies and then obviously the new marijuana.
No, inside Overlook, inside, uh, as a.
No, it was all quarry.
Oh. Just, just a question. So it's 310 units, how high the building will be?
Five stories is what we'll be coming forward with.
And parking will be on the side or?
So parking will be sort of to the, rear is sort of a bad term here. I don't have a, a compass direction on the screen, but the building will wrap the parking on three out of the four sides, so that it's, you know, mostly hidden from view. And I think the intention will be the one exposed piece of the parking structure will be up against the, you know, quarry wall, so to speak.
Excuse me, is, is Lot 15 behind the storage facility?
It is. I, I rent that storage facility, looks at it. That's right behind the timeline storage facility, or prime storage now facility.
So there's no access from where the storage facility is or Cappies to get into Lot 15? You have to go through Salem Street to get there?
Yes.
Correct.
And if, and I like to say, it's very pleasing, a, a lot of developers, if they're giving, if they're giving income-approved apartments, most, most of them are at 10%, and you're at 15, which is very admirable. So if, if I, if you have about 310 units, are you talking about 46 units, thereabouts?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, any of those for veterans?
That's not something that we are, have currently proposed, but it's certainly not something that we are opposed to, as opposed to proposed. So it, it's, if that's something that the board or, and/or community is interested in, we are certainly willing to engage in that conversation to determine if that is a good fit and something that's desired by the municipality.
So if that's 46 units, this, this board could leave it up to you, how many veteran units you would have? And to, to propose, how many veteran units could be in place for affordable housing?
Yes, and I, I think, you might correct me if I'm wrong, that that might be the sort of condition that could make its way into a site plan approval ultimately.
And are the 46 units that are, that are income-related, are they Revere and Malden together, or is 46 the Revere number?
So that, that is just the Revere number. There will be, on the Malden side, each, each one of those buildings has its own number of income restricted at actually different rates. I, I don't know off the top of my head which of the lots on the screen splits up this way, but I know one of them goes to a considerably lower AMI, all the way down to 30%, and then sort of goes up in tiers thereafter. And as noted, another one is senior housing, but also affordable. And so it's a, it's a different mix to approach satisfying the need for affordable housing in this area.
And would Revere residents come first?
That, that's another item that I do believe we are legally, you have to be a little careful, I think, with the type of language that you use, but you can give local preference for affordable units.
So putting local preference in with the 15% and veterans, could you modify that? Would that be something that you could entertain?
Yeah, we, yes, we can certainly entertain. I have to, have to lift the client behind me on that one. But yes, we, we are certainly willing to engage in those conversations, and I think they're very reasonable requests.
It would go with the new flag I put up there?
Well, Marshall already promised the new flag, so that, that one's already a yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You go, buddy. Yeah, no, just, just another question. On this 350 units, I mean 310, I'm sorry, if I'm not mistaken, the borderline between Revia and Malden is just a little piece that it shows in here, is that correct?
Yes, so the building itself, we're being careful to show it being constructed, I mean, and it would be constructed solely in Revere, and that would only be open landscape space that crosses over into the Malden.
Oh, so nothing to do with limited space, you know, just?
No, this is what you see, and I don't even know how to describe the shape on the screen. The, the yellow funny shape on the screen is all the building structure in which the residential units would be placed. And then where it actually says Lot 15 itself is where the parking would exist, that parking structure that would be wrapped on three sides.
All right. One of the other things that we would like you to take in consideration, we do have a lot of working people in Revia, and we would like you to take in consideration, give an opportunity to Revia residents on, on, on any given project on Revia anyways.
Understood. Thank you.
Of Lot 15, I know you proposed, given a generous amount of low-income housing and the other ones in the Malden side, that's all to be developed. But of the 3,000 or so units you have now, how many of those are affordable?
So far, none of them are affordable.
Zero, right? Yeah. So that 46 they're proposing is 46 to the 310, the other 3,000 don't have any. That's, so anything going forward, I guess, sounds, if had a change of, you've been willing to accommodate folks that are in need, so I appreciate that. I, I guess the only challenge for me is the, the retail. I know the city is so desperate for commercial income and, and tax dollars, and we proposed the hotel, and I know your hotel consultant has told you it's not sustainable or fundable, but everybody else in the city's can, has been opening hotels with great success. And I just, it hurts to say, we're gonna get a bodega instead of a 90-key hotel. And I know we say there won't be a drive-through, but I assure you, if Starbucks says they want to open, they want to drive-through, you'll be back in front of us looking for the green light for a drive-through. And those casual, quick-service restaurants that have eight or 10 tables and a takeout counter, I'm sure there'll be predominantly Uber Eats business and takeout, like every other retail, um, quick-service restaurant in, in Boston and beyond. So there will be constant cars in and out of there for a restaurant. I, I, I just, you know, a hair salon or, or a small retail establishment in place of a 90-key hotel that was proposed, it, it just doesn't seem like a fair swap to give you the green light to build another 310 units. And so I wish there was, you know, I, I know you're trying to be as considerate as possible on the affordable housing, and the only reason, that's, the only thing impeding you from already developing that was that it's tied to, you, you put in a hotel that was, you know, promised at the initial development, and it seems like everything else got developed, but no problem, except that one portion that prevented you building the final section. And you don't have any tenants lined up, right? You'd have to get the green light here to detach the hotel so you could go and shop, shop for, for long-term tenants. Do, do we have any guesstimate on what the difference is between tax revenue for the city from a hotel to a bodega? I'm just trying to get an idea of what we're looking at. It seems pretty significant impact to the city. It's a material difference.
Uh, I mean, if you'd like to make the comparison.
Well, certainly the room tax is.
It's huge.
Significant.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think from my client's perspective, the better comparison is not from hotel versus retail, but is retail versus nothing, given their position. It's, you know, I, I can't say whether they would sit and wait, whether they would try to sell, you know, that, that's not for me to say, but their perspective is that they are prepared, and in fact, are prepared to move rather swiftly, coming back for site plan review to get shovels in the ground this, you know, calendar year, if we could, to proceed forward with building the retail structures and the residential structure, you know, especially where the residential structure, both with the market rate units and the affordable units, both, you know, do at least a small part in trying to help, you know, address the housing crisis overall, and then certainly the affordable housing crisis. And so, you know, some of this is, they're, they're a for-profit developer, and, you know, they, they have their investors in their bottom line as well, and so these are the determinations they've made and, and made, and, and this is our request.
Yeah, understood. And for low income in Lot 15, most, you know, low income typically has a lower parking requirement, because folks are less likely to have vehicles. But the property has a walkable score of a 34, which makes it a car-dependent location. So it's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge.
I'm not certain i- if your zoning ordinance, does it actually address a different parking ratio for affordable units, even though there is no affordable requirement?
No, it does not.
Yes, so, so it would still be parked at the two-to-one ratio, whether they are, you know, assigned as, or dedicated restricted units or the market rate unit. So there would be no, you know, penalty, so to speak, against the income restricted units not being allowed to have a car.
No, no, I understand that. We've got, we have a, a potential for folks that are landlocked with no walkable resources. So I, that's all I call out, is you've got folks that they don't have anything to walk to. I mean, retail would benefit them, right, to have something local.
Isn't there a shuttle that I was talking about yesterday?
Yes, so, so there is also a shuttle service that runs four times a day, sort of twice out, twice in. It serves, it has three different pickup locations within the master development, and it goes both to Malden Center and to Haymarket, and then the return trips in the afternoon and the evening.
Do you, do you have a number for, for the retail, the cost, how much it will cost?
No, we haven't, we haven't run those. I mean, really, we view this as an amenity for the community. You know, it's, again, it's a small project, probably about 10,000 square feet for retail. You know, it's based on kind of feedback we've done from residents, feedback we've done from members of the city council, you know, they feel that, you know, neighborhood service retail would be, you know, really beneficial to the residents that are there, probably existing in the future. So, you know, we, sorry.
So, you know, we're open to working with everybody in terms of like the mix of tenants that we get there, but we really view this as, you know, neighborhood services, you know, when we talk about restaurants, we're talking about fast casual, so it's, you know, Qdoba, Kava, that type of thing is what we've envisioned, but if that's not what you guys think is more appropriate there, then, you know, we're willing to work with everybody on this.
What about 310 units?
So as far as how much it's going to cost?
Yeah.
Well, you know, rough numbers, I mean, we haven't had this building drawn yet. Typically, what we do is, you know, before we go through a full draw, drawing of the building, to where we can get actual estimates from a general contractor to give us costs, you know, we'll have the approval in him, but, you know, generally speaking, right now, you're probably thinking somewhere around like 300 to 350,000 dollars a door, is my guess is where they would.
So you have done, you haven't done the pre-construction budget yet, so that's what you said?
Very rough estimates, which is, which is generally where we're.
Okay.
But they're not based on any actual, you know, commitments from a general contractor, right?
No, it's, it's a good guesstimate. And the only thing that should be mentioned, that if you have a hotel, both hotels, whether it be Hilton or Marriott, whatever, they all have a breakfast or buffet or some kind of restaurant or some, some kind of shop inside the hotel right now. So even, even just thinking about the hotel, but the thing that you're not getting, if you keep on the hotel, you're not getting the veterans' housing, and you're not getting affordable housing. Veterans aren't going to be living in the hotel, and affordable people will not be living in the hotel. Yes, you are giving up some income, but you are making a, a better atmosphere for 4,000 residents up there that's very hard to, to get around, as you're saying. So you're making an unwalkable amenity walkable. You're giving them what they want, and I think it's a pretty good idea.
We, we have been working and pushing them for years for a hotel on that site, and they have went to many, have gone to many flags, and nobody was interested in the site, probably because of the access and the visibility is not there, but if they could have built a hotel, I'm sure they, they would have, and it's just, it's been out there, like, like she mentioned, with the consultants, and with many hotel consultants on, on this case, and they couldn't sell it.
I, I remember, just to go off on something, because it, it's a void, it's, you're in a mountain, it's a quarry, and at one time, one person wanted to start on the top and use everything below it as its basement, and it would have been fifty stories, so I, it's a beautiful little project, it's really nice, it's lasted all these years, and I think this amenity will help the, the people who are living there and future people, the other three hundred.
We hope so too.
Just one more question, on, on the three hundred and ten units, there will be no retail space at all?
That's, that's correct, that will be residential only, I mean, there will be a lobby, mailroom, I'm sure, but no, no retail.
They're all rental, right, there's no condos and?
Uh, no, so there are no condos currently on the site, um, one of the sites in the Malden portion of the future development, it could potentially be an affordable condominium project, but there's no market economy.
Are any of them Airbnb at the moment?
Uh, to my knowledge, no, we, I mean, we have a, a policy where we don't permit Airbnb's, so we do our best to, to not have residents.
Will there be any retail sites on the Malden side?
Uh, some of the future development and on lot fourteen, you say, the fourteen A specifically, would be future retail after those on-off ramps to Route One are constructed.
The, the site will be close to Route One, right?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's equidistant to the site you're proposing for lot one, fourteen A and lot one to fifteen, it's equidistant, it's the same walk distance for, yeah, so they're gonna put retail there as well?
That, that site is permitted, well, the proposed permitted is for a bit of a larger retail component up to, I believe, ninety thousand square feet.
But that's in Malden?
That's in Malden, yes, on what I now am showing towards the bottom.
Went over somebody's fence.
Yeah, yeah, no, but, the thesis, so this retail's a great idea because nothing else there? It's not true, it's just on the Revere side of the fence, on the Malden side there'll be retail there, bigger retail, so we got the bodega, I'm, I'm just being, I'm just being sarcastic on it, I just, I hate seeing.
Understood, although the timing will be quite different, because as, as Eric noted, nothing can be unlocked for retail purposes over on lot fourteen for Revere, I'm sorry, for Malden, until those on and off ramps are actually constructed, and.
That's a major project, yeah. What do you, what is the ETA, five years or less?
Well, I think you'd have to ask DOT.
I think we've been hearing this for like ten years on the on and off ramp.
Yes, and so I think originally DOT had much bigger plans in mind, and then removed those, and then proposed new plans, and so, you know, the, the four million dollars from Mass Works is actually, you know, that is earmarked, has to be used, to advance those plans, where the intention is for it to first address the signalization on the Revere side, Salem Street and Overlook Bridge Drive, and then there will be future applications made with Malden to Mass Works to help along the actual advancement of the design work and potentially to help advance the construction of the on-ramps, and I say potentially only in terms of the funding, not the actual realization.
Yeah, I would just add that, so our current MEPA certificate, we are not allowed to have a TCO on any of the additional development until we do the Salem Street signalization and flipping of the Overlook Bridge roadway on the other side of the firehouse, so that stuff will get done, I mean, as, as she mentioned, we have the four million dollar Mass Works grant, so we're currently working, that everybody get that project underway, because that has to proceed in order for us to, to occupy any future buildings.
That grant you have, is that specific to Revere?
No, I'm sorry, the what?
You said you have four million on Mass Works grant, is that, that's from the governor, but is that specific to Revere?
So it's actually awarded to Malden, Revere, I believe, is the co-applicant on it, but Malden took the lead, that was just the decision between the two municipalities.
So in, in other words, you gotta do the retail, the two retail buildings before you can do the three hundred and ten units?
Um, so we have to do the, the infrastructure work, I mean, we are open to, to, you know, doing the retail at the same time as the three hundred and ten units, so that's provided for the, the community.
And those are adjacent to the fire station, or they're surrounding it?
The, they're actually adjacent to it, yeah, they'll be kinda, I guess, like right behind it.
The fire station is closer to, uh, the, the Salem Street.
So these would be, if I'm looking from Salem Street, I could see the fire station, these would be behind it or to the left of it?
I mean, that, we haven't done the final site plan, but.
Or in that patch of grass on the right, yeah.
Yeah, so, so where the roadway actually comes around on the top of the fire station, that is actually the site, so we flip the Overlook Bridge Drive onto the other side of the firehouse.
Where the fire doors are?
Correct, yeah, and then that creates the, the site path.
So here's the roadway he's talking about, here's the fire doors.
Yeah.
So he's going this way.
Yeah.
Guest.
All right.
Are there other questions?
I think we've asked all we could think of, so.
Are there other proponents to speak? Are there any opponents? Okay. Thank you.
So you can see the, you know, the isolated lot.
You can see the isolated lot on Mara Street, which I'm talking about, that's being converted to C, from CD to RA One, and the rest are contiguous, the other lots are contiguous to the Conservation District that exists today in that area.
Are there any opponents that, or any proponents that would like to speak to this?
No, I, I guess I'm the only proponent from the city.
The ones that want RA One to CD, there's no buildings on them now, right, at the moment?
No, no, the RA One lot would, CD RA One lot would not be a billable lot, but we do have owners within, that are, within, private owners within our CD district that have a large lot that they would convey to the city of Revere and add to our Conservation District if the city council approves a land swap for the lot on Mara Street, so it, it would mean the city, if the council approves it, we would be getting a larger parcel of land for Conserv, for our Conservation District and in lieu of the small Conservation District parcel.
Will we have to purchase this land?
Pardon me?
We have to purchase this land, right? Would we have to purchase this? We're purchasing it from the present owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have a, I don't look in the packet, is there an estimated cost?
That, that would go through the city council, and whether, you know, they decide to auction off the land or, or however they decide to do it, but you could only build a single-family home on it.
Is this part of Mara Street, Frank, where the cul-de-sac is, or is on the other end of Mara Street?
No, this is on the beginning of Mara Street, right behind where the hotel is.
Right behind.
And as you go, as you continue on closer to the Saugus side, that's where the cul-de-sac is, where the newer homes are built. You know, what used to be the Cat, what used to be, um, Writing Academy, Wally Woods?
Yeah.
Yeah, Writing Academy.
Yes. Okay. So you're behind the Quality Inn?
Yes.
And that's gonna be Conservation?
No, that's not Conservation.
That's R One.
That, that's RA One, that's all, you can see it's surrounded by all RA One, which is the yellow.
Are there any opponents to speak to this today?
Eric, now we'll close that hearing, we can move on to the regular meeting, and the first item of business will be the approval of previous meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, the second?
Second.
Yep, approved. The second item is vote on a recommendation to the city council with respect to the zoning map amendments to the Conservation District and RA One District in North Revere. The city council will be having a zoning subcommittee meeting on April eighth, these will be further discussed, but they're not gonna have that meeting until they receive the planning board's recommendation. So.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Abrams. Second?
Second motion.
Mrs. Tamatopoulos. Take a roll call, miss, issue a favorable recommendation to the city council, Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Tamatopoulos?
Yes.
And Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
So ordered. Third, third item is vote on recommendation to the city council with respect to zoning on its amendments to the Overlook Bridge, Overly District. Do you have any recommendations or comments you want to add to the city council on this item?
I'm excited about the housing. I think we're all looking forward to that.
Yeah. Did you want to recommend anything in regards to housing?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that out of the fifteen percent, that a percentile of the fifteen percent will be left up to the developer for veterans, and also that Revere residents will be, would have a preference in, in housing.
Okay, I'll write that into the, into the recommendation of the motion, is there a second?
Yes, second, second, based on the veteran in Revere preference housing as well.
Okay. Second by Mrs. Tamatopoulos. Okay, we'll take a roll call on the vote, Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tamatopoulos?
Yes.
Yes. And finally, the third item is recommendation to the city council with respect to family home-based childcare regulations.
I would just vote for approval with the recommendation that a, a safety. A safety cover for pools be recommended by the Revere City Council.
I will make, I will include that in the recommendation, that all pools will have to have a safety, certified safety cover.
I think it goes by weight, yes, that'd be fine.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Rivera? Okay, on the recommendation, Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tamatopoulos?
Yes.
Yes, voted so ordered. Okay, that, that covers all, all the business this evening before the planning board, and we have a motion to adjourn. Adjourn.
Yes.
At six thirty-seven.
April something.
Ninth, four-nine.